And welcome to the September 27, 2012 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Brother G. Floyd of the Galilee Baptist Church of Longview. Please stand.
As we pray, eternal and merciful God, Father with child in heaven, we come, God, praising and thanking you for all your many blessings. Thank you, God, for your love and kindness and your mercy that you extended to all of us. Thank you, God, that we bring together, that we might be able to come together and look at the issues that a face our city. Father God, we ask for a special blessing on our mayor and his entire family right now. Give him traveling mercies and grace. God, we ask you to bless our city manager also, Lord, we ask you to give him traveling mercies. And bless each and every family of the council representatives here today and each of the department heads, that they might be able to look insightfully into the issues and the needs of the persons of Longview and the families, that they might be able to address them. God, we ask you to give us a spirit of cooperation tonight, that we might be able to look at the issues and, Lord, do those things that are best and pleasing in your sight. And God, whether we be sick or well, whether be far or near, don't leave us nor forsake us, but continue to keep us in your care. And we'd be careful always to give you the glory and give you the praise. In Jesus' name we praise and give thanks. Amen.
Amen.
Chief Fanderson, would you meet me back in the anteroom, please? I've got a problem here. Buddy?
Yes. Would you? Okay. Jessica, I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again. Please be seated. I'm sure you're wondering what just transpired. I believe Mr. Sims cut himself. So thankfully, we have some emergency staff on hand this evening. We're going to begin with citizen comment. Vic Verma.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Williams and members of council. I was calling, I'm here to speak about the diversity of the Leadco Board. I know that new appointments are coming soon to the board. And as the Chair of the applicant diversity team through the City of Longview Unity and Diversity Committee, we've been working with the city to improve its diversity and appreciate the efforts made by the city. We are happy that the city has a diversity plan that will allow for progress in this area, and we've seen progress already. And as we move forward, we also, diversity also needs to be a priority in all aspects of our community. With this in mind, it's been observed by me and others that the Leadco Board consists only of white males, if I'm correct. This is an issue from a racial, ethnic, and gender perspective. Diversity on the Leadco Board is important for a variety of reasons. In particular, diversity can lead to other economic opportunities for the city as a whole through new ideas. Diversity can also lead to economic opportunities all over the city and not just in certain parts of town. The City of Longview, to my, if I understand correctly, is a prime source of funding for Leadco. This means that the taxpayers of Longview are a prime source of funding for Leadco. We have a diverse populace, and they need to be represented accordingly. I should also make sure that I note that this is not intended as a criticism of current Leadco members or any, and I want to make that clear as well. Since the City of Longview is a prime funding source for Leadco, we urge the city to use its influence to work with Leadco in improving the diversity of its board. The city has a diversity plan that it holds itself accountable to, and that is to be commended. The next step is for the city to use this diversity plan to urge entities that it provides funds to embrace the same diversity initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vic. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Mr. Crane, Steve Crane.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Williams. It's good to see you, council members.
Thank you.
Mr. Ewing. I'm here for the same purpose. As you know, the applicant diversity team had been around for quite a while, and I worked on that committee with Paul Rosenbloom, who made a presentation here a couple of years ago. And I think that presentation convinced the council that really you needed to move forward with some sort of diversity plan. And as Vic has indicated, the city has remained true to that commitment and is working diligently to make that a reality. I'm also Chair of the PTAC, the Public Transportation Advisory Committee. And when I look at that committee and I look at the staff, I see black, I see white, I see brown. I see evidence that that diversity plan is alive and well in the public transportation department at, in, for the City of Longview. And I would encourage the City of Longview to take a look at, if you have entities that are receiving significant numbers of dollars from the city, like Leadco. And I'm like, Vic, I'm not criticizing Leadco here. You know, this is a process, and we're talking about progress. And, you know, change sometimes doesn't come easy. But, you know, the council is charged with the duty to make sure that its citizens are fairly represented. And I would like the city council to take a good, hard look at the diversity, not only in the Leadco Board of Directors, but in the Leadco staff, and take a look and see if they have a diversity plan and whether there are resources that the city might be able to offer them to help diversify their workforce. So I support the city council and its diversity plan. It's a real pleasure and a privilege to serve as Chair of the PTAC, and I look forward to seeing what the city council, how the city council handles this issue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Brandon Johnson. Good evening.
Mayor Protem, City Council, Assistant City Manager, young lady, gentlemen, all y'all in TV world, everybody here. I would like for the people of the NAACP, if you would, please stand. All right. Thank you. You can be seated. It has come to our attention through many concerned citizens that entities which do business with the city have difficulty either becoming diverse or maintaining diversity. There appears to be a lack of women representation along with the lack of multicultural diversity. The lack of citywide cross-representation is apparent as well. Leadco was created by the voters of the City of Longview in 1991 and is guided by a Board of Directors who make decisions for the good of Longview. It has in recent years received an average of $5 million annually from our tax dollars. Five of the current Board members are voting members, and all are Anglo-men, two bankers, one general contractor, and two leaders in area businesses, SWEPCO and Eastman. The Board also includes five additional ex-officio non-voting members, who are also all Anglo-white male, CEOs of both hospitals, two businessmen, and one of the superintendents of the three public school districts. According to the Leadco webpage, the five voting members and five non-voting members are appointed by the mayor and city council to oversee the program direction of the organization. The people of the current and previous boards are quite possibly nice folks. They appear to be generous with personal giving, and some have a rich history in Longview. These individuals are not in question, rather the principles are. And I'm going to tell you why. We realize there have been black members in the past, and there have been women in the past, and even a great woman that is pending. That could have given input to this issue. But we are not aware that they did or they would without this point actually ever becoming known. And that is, with the growing Muslim-owned businesses in Longview, there's no Muslim representation. With the many Asian business owners, there's no Asian representation. The question of Latino representation, if any, has been even more limited. Since we, the people, have created Leadco for all, the Board is self-sought and usually undisputed by the council. We need a wake-up call to encourage all who do business in Longview to create a climate of inclusivity and multiculturalism through cultural responsiveness. We ask you, is it possible to expand and retain businesses or to grow a workforce in Longview without diverse perspectives? On behalf of concerned citizens of Longview, I encourage you, the council, and mayor in his absence, Mayor Protem, prioritize and implement practices to increase board diversity in Leadco. To do this, it is imperative to have processes in place to be able to identify diverse candidates. We understand with minimal experience the difference between 46A and 46B. However, there is a large building for potential corporate use that looks atrocious.
Hold on just a second, Brandon. Hold on just a second, please. Counsel, can we extend his time to finish? Okay. Please go ahead.
There's a large building on I-20 that looks atrocious that would be a great project to take on by Leadco. But there has been no movement for years. And I'm speaking of the Holiday Inn at Estes and I-20. There are also many acres of undeveloped land and older structures near I-20 and along 259 that need development. The Chamber is not excluded, as they appear to only focus on North 259 and Loop 281. The real draw to this city is strangling businesses. What makes the focus on Longview south of Highway 80 so repulsive to the Chamber and Leadco? These are questions we want to know. We believe that organizations and companies that expand their search for board members to include more women, minorities, will find a breadth and depth of talent that will serve to improve their performance and increase the wealth of the investors. One of the core beliefs of Leadco, as it states, "We believe in routine critical self-evaluation of our programs and efforts striving for continuous improvements to meet changing marketplace demands." So with that in mind, we ask that in an effort of full transparency, we receive answers to the following questions, and I'm closing. Does Leadco have a diversity plan submitted to the city? If not, why not? If so, has this diversity plan been conveyed that the entities are primarily funded by the city make decisions about multiculturalism? Have diversity issues even been discussed with entities this magnitude by the city? What do you need from the NAACP or other community organizations to improve diverse representation and perspective? Does this issue of Leadco's fiduciary responsibilities need to go before the citizens of Longview in a vote before change can happen? What type of authority does the city council have in the say-so of who is selected as board members of Leadco? I am closing. I know that someone might say they can check into this matter, or they can do this or that. What we're asking is that you do something, not check into it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brandon. If I may, thank you all for coming to speak to that issue. And just, I feel like, you know, obviously, this is a point where we need to respond. As far as the City of Longview, rest assured that we take issues of diversity seriously. We have the Unity and Diversity Team in place. Vic Verma came and spoke as the Chair of the applicant diversity team, and those strategies are working. But we have heard you this evening as far as the concern level with tax dollars from the city and the amount that we put in toward Leadco. So we will take that matter seriously. You know, you asked several questions in regard to whether or not Leadco has a diversity plan, not to my knowledge, or whether it has been submitted to the city. Leadco's staff is not a very large staff, the size of the City of Longview's staff, hundreds of people. So I don't know that that would definitely or necessarily be a requirement, but it is obvious that, you know, there is a concern in our community. And on behalf of the city, we appreciate you all coming this evening to share your concerns. And we will, as a council, I believe, take this under advisement as we proceed, because no decisions have been made firmly or voted on at this time in regard to the selection of board members. I heard you mention that several times, different ones of you. And furthermore, the way that Leadco is established, yes, it was voted on in 1991, the way the dollars are distributed for A, for B, part go to manufacturing and continue to support our local businesses here in this community, and another portion goes to support our parks and different infrastructure projects within our community. And so if we did do something differently, as far as how those dollars are spent and put back into our local economy or our local community, we would have to take it to the citizens for a vote. So thank you again. If there's nothing else, can we move forward, council? Consent agenda. Council, is there anything you'd like to pull for further consideration from the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Action items. Consider an ordinance amending various sections of the City of Longview Policies and Procedures Guide. Ms. Haiko.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Williams, City Council, Mr. Ewing.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to bring forward to you the ethical conduct policies.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Ms. Haiko. Could you hold on for just one second? I apologize. Yes, Mr. Smith.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion before Ms. Haiko gets started.
Okay.
I move to postpone items D and F on the action items list until October 11, 2012, until we have a full council present.
Okay. Items B and F from the action.
Item D and F.
D and F?
That's correct.
You want a table? You want a motion to table?
I want a motion to table. No, I'm making a motion.
Okay.
Is it a motion to table?
Yeah.
Motion to table, items D and F.
D and?
Yes, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
It wasn't a motion to table. It's a motion to postpone until.
The next council meeting.
October 11, 2012, until a full council is present.
Can I ask a question?
We may have to, hold on.
The CIP does not have to go tonight. The Leadco budget, you know, is effective October 1, so they would not be, they would not have a budget if it's not approved by council tonight, so.
Okay.
May I amend your motion?
I amend my motion to only include item D until a date of October 11, 2012, until we have a full council present.
Is that okay? I was wondering, did we first have to kill the initial motion?
Okay.
Here, a minute.
October 12, 2012. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Okay. Item D will be postponed until we have a full council.
Liven it up with a little humor. Ms. Haiko, are we ready?
We are.
Okay. Let's proceed with action item A, ordinance amending various sections of the City of Longview Policies and Procedures Guide. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Protem, council, Assistant City Manager Ewing. Tonight, I'm bringing forward amendments to seven policies in our current City of Longview policy guide. Four of the seven actually have to do with ethical conduct. And just a little background, you all probably recall that there was a city council retreat and work session last winter where we had a discussion about ethical conduct, whether or not we had a policy in place at the City of Longview. We did not have, we do not have an umbrella policy that per se mentions ethics. And so we were charged with forming such a policy. So we actually ended up forming a small employee team. It was a cross-functional team where there was a representative from every department there to research, discuss, and actually end up developing the policies that you see this evening. But I would like to recognize real quick the team members, because several of them are in the audience today. If you just kind of wave your hand. We had Chief Bates from the Longview Fire Department, that assisted Chief Bishop from the Police Department, Alicia Kidd-Brooks from Development Services, Gary Lilly from Community Services, Brian Richardson from Public Works, Jay Latch from Finance. And then we also had Terry Jackson sitting in from the City Attorney's Office, and Mr. Ewing, as well as myself. And we met all summer and conducted this research and put these things together for you. It was difficult, because we really had to dig into several state statutes regarding ethical limitations, because we're a public sector entity. There's quite a few laws that come into play, two of which will be the Texas Local Government Code and the Texas Penal Code. So we kind of dug into that and learned very quickly that it really is virtually impossible to have one document that actually addresses every single ethical dilemma that an employee might face because of our different functional areas. So you'll notice, as we walk through a couple of the policies, that we have an umbrella policy that is broadly written to serve as just a general guide. It provides these guiding principles for the employees, and then we use the rest of our policy book, especially the conduct section, to address any corrective action that is needed. I would like to call your attention to policy 1.05. You have a hard copy of this exhibit in front of you, I believe, tonight. It is the first yellow tab, 1.05. What we did was took an existing policy, it was very short in nature regarding employee motivation and behavior, and added additional meat to this policy to serve as the general guide. It's tied very closely to other specific policies in our handbook. And you'll notice that there is a purpose statement or several statements there reminding the employees that we are working for the good of Longview citizens. It's our aim to continually strive to be a high-performing municipal government, and that employee behavior should always promote the goodwill and public's trust. We then go into a policy statement outlining the core expectation that every employee is expected to do their very best in their job, to make the most ethical decisions possible. And then we wanted to bring in the city's core values of accountability, teamwork, integrity, and professionalism. And then coupled with the values, we added a decision-making tool for employees to use, just a simple three questions that they can ask themselves when they're faced with a situation, when they're out on the job. And those three questions are, is the action that I'm getting ready to take lawful? Would my actions cause embarrassment to the city? And is there justification to back up my action? Now, the employee would obviously have the opportunity to consult with a supervisor if needed, but we like to empower our employees all the way down to the frontline level. And if they would just ask themselves these three questions, we're hoping that that would guide their actions. There is a reporting piece to our policy as well. You might have noticed in that any kind of misconduct or unethical behavior that is witnessed by other employees need to be reported to their immediate supervisor or to the director of HR, whichever, you know, they prefer. And then finally, we do have a mention that supervisors and managers really need to be pointing to other sections of our policy for specific details when they're taking corrective action and even terminating employees. So made that statement there. I have tabbed a policy, our definitions policy, but unless you have questions, I'm going to pass through that one. Just, we added a few new terms because of these changes to that policy. And then I'd like to just call your attention then to 2.11, which is outside employment and business interests. We already had this policy in place, but it mostly spoke to just second jobs that employees hold. And wanted to add to it the potential for employees to have business and financial interests outside of their work at the city. So we made an overall policy statement that any outside employment, business interests, or activities must, number one, not interfere with the employee's regular duties, and number two, not constitute a conflict of interest. We added a full section that gives employees examples of what these business interests might be. And it goes beyond just ownership or partial ownership in a company. We want them to remember and be thinking as they maybe sit on a committee for another organization that might have a conflict with the city, any consultant work, sitting on a board of directors, you know, these sorts of things, just to get the wheels turning and be thinking, what do I do, you know, in my job as a City of Longview employee, and would that conflict with my duties there, serving on this board? We also added a disclosure statement in that employees are now required to disclose those business and financial interests that they have away from their job. They're to provide sufficient enough detail for the manager to help them make a decision as to whether or not a conflict exists or does not exist. And then I wanted to point out one other policy change. It will be your last yellow tab. This is 3.12, gifts and gratuities policy. I don't really want to spend a whole lot of time on it unless you have questions, but we wanted to make sure that we were in complete alignment with state law, and so we made quite a few changes to this. The primary policy actually states that employees may not accept gifts, gratuities, or benefits even when it was unsolicited, and it can be shown that it did not influence any decision that they might have made on the job. Now, there are four exceptions that are written into state law, and we went ahead and included these four. And one of them, just to give you an example, is token gifts. Employees are allowed under state statute to accept a gift of a value less than $50, but cannot accept cash, gift cards, or anything that would be considered of money, or something like that.
Right.
So unless you have questions, I just wanted to present that exception to you. As we roll it out to employees, there will be quite a bit of questions, and we'll be addressing those during training. Finally, at the end of this policy in Section C, there is a reporting clause where employees are supposed to report prohibited gifts that they receive, but it gives them some alternatives. They would be able to donate whatever it is back to the City of Longview if they prefer, or to a tax-exempt charitable organization, as mentioned here in pursuant to the Texas Penal Code. And then finally, employees are not able to solicit any gift or benefit. That was actually a piece that was already in our policy originally. Now, we did make three other changes that you see in your packet, totally unrelated to ethics. You know, we're always constantly looking at our policy guide. It's a fluid document. You have those changes before you as well. I can answer questions for those. But we just are asking that you please consider this ordinance amending our policy guide.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one, the disclosure of financial interest in an entity outside of the City of Longview, is that retroactive? Meaning, because I know that we have, you know, employees that may have more than one job, or employees that may have vested financial interests in other entities outside of the city. We also have employees that may serve on various boards, because I did read all of that information prior to, so I'm just curious to know, or is it just effective today after, you know, if we approve this?
I believe that it's, that it's actually, this should cause employees, when they see it and read it, and as we roll it out and start having discussions, that they need to think about their current situation. And if they are serving on a board, have that discussion with their manager. Is there some sort of conflict? Do I have a business interest right now? So it almost is retroactive if they're currently, you know, a party to that business, have partial ownership. Mr. Ewing, did you want?
I mean, if they had, if it's a past interest that they no longer have, they wouldn't need to.
Right.
It wouldn't be retroactive in that effect. But once a policy is effective, then any, you know, interest that they have currently, they wouldn't be required to notify?
I was asking for a point of clarification, just so that I would know. We'd hate to go back and say, well, we found out this person has an interest here. And situations like that may indeed sometimes occur. Lastly, my other question is, as far as, we do need an ethics policy, so thank you and your team for putting that together. That way, we have some concrete rules that we can follow. But it is. But it is, it does apply to all employees.
It does.
Correct? Meaning, and I just want to clarify that, from the division manager down to the frontline employee, you know...
Part-time, full-time.
All employees.
Temporary employees who are on our books. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, are there any other questions? Anybody? Thank you. If there are no further questions, I'd like to entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Motion carries. Action item B, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with the City of Kilgore. Mr. Ewing.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. This is an interlocal agreement. I had sent some information to city council last month. Our IT division went and visited with the City of Kilgore probably about 45 days ago. They were having some issues, asked for some consultation. During that meeting, they had a discussion about the possibility of the City of Longview providing the IT services to them. We came back and discussed it and felt like we would be able to do that. Definitely, there are costs associated with that. We did not want the City of Longview to have that burden of that cost, so we are bringing forward this interlocal agreement to provide IT services. Since we are a municipality, we have that expertise that we can bring to the table, and certainly, again, as is stated, there is a cost. We would need to hire two additional people, an IT specialist and an administrative assistant to kind of free up some of our IT specialists to provide this additional service. We feel like this is a neighborly thing, if you will. We want to work with our other entities nearby and help and support them, and so therefore, we are bringing forward this interlocal agreement to provide that service. The city council, the City of Kilgore, approved this interlocal agreement about two weeks ago, so they're in full support of it as well. So, we recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Counsel, are there any questions?
Do we break even on this, or do we make a little money?
You know, initially, I'm sure we won't, we will break even. I think there's a lot of work to be done and support as we move up eventually, that as we get their systems in order over the next year or two, certainly. Of course, we are not allowed to make money, we're not a business, but it would be supplemental revenue, so, but we would certainly put that towards our IT systems in Kilgore and expanding those and improving them, so.
I think it's an neighborly thing to do. Cooperation, this has been our mantle.
I agree for our region, and not only that, it's important to clarify that we are not incurring the cost for these additional employees. That's something that Kilgore, the City of Kilgore, is taking on, so I think it's a good deal. Counsel, any further discussion? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Motion carries. Item C, an ordinance amending the city FY fiscal year 2012-2013 budget. Mr. Ewing.
You just approved this, and you're already having to amend it, so. This is the associated expense with the interlocal agreement that the council just approved. The initial cost, the base cost is $110,000. If there are any costs outside of normal business hours, then that would require overtime. Again, we would require Kilgore to take on that additional expense, therefore, the amount here is a little higher than the $110, at $115. And we also budget the offsetting revenue of $115, $200, so we are balanced. So, again, we recommend approval for this, so we can pay for this interlocal agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any discussion? Not, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Ewing. Action item E, consider resolution authorizing and directing the disbursement of grants of hotel occupancy tax monies. We also have, before you begin, is that okay? We have an individual here that's here to speak to this issue, Ms. Natalie Rabicoff. Is that the proper procedure, Mr. Finley?
Normally, they speak at the beginning, but if you want to let her speak this time, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Williams and city council.
Good evening.
I have the honor of serving, pardon me, on the Arts Commission, and I wanted to thank you for working with us last year, and I'm hoping that this year, we have a wonderful group of people that are really dedicated, and a wonderful chairwoman with Ms. Fontaine. And there's some other members that are here. Debbie Fontaine and Ginna Northcutt are both here. But what I wanted to speak to, it would be very helpful when y'all are talking about funds, because I know funds are rare, but we have a wonderful base here for the arts, but we have arts that are established, the ballet, the symphony, the art museum, Arts View, and we have newcomers. And we need another little fund of some kind. I mean, it may be that we work together with writing for more grant money, I don't know, besides the hotel motel money, but we take from the established ones in order to help get the other ones started, and we need something to get them started. And we talked with Mr. Richard Manley last year, in hopes that he's one of the representatives or liaison, that y'all could come together with something like that, because for a town no bigger than we are, we're really blessed, and with the productions that all these different entities put on, we're really blessed. But that's all I wanted to say, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and thank you to the members of the Cultural Arts and Advisory Commission who are here. Thank you for your service. Mr. Johnson.
Mayor Protem, council, Mr. Ewing. The Cultural Activities Advisory Commission receives and reviews grant requests for the Arts and Cultural Grant Program, and the cultural arts receive 26 projects this year for a total request of $386,394. And after discussion with the applicants, reviewing the applications, and the funding that's available, the commission is recommending the award of $250,500 to these entities reflecting the October 2012, September 2013 calendar year. And staff is requesting passage and approval of recommended funding at this time.
Counsel, are there any questions? If not, may I have a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Johnson, thank you so much for your work as well with this commission. Action item F, consider a resolution adopting the Longview Economic Development Corporation budget. Mr. Ewing.
Thank you. Unfortunately, the executive director, Susan Gill, was unable to be here to present this. Typically, they have a representative that presents this, so they asked me to do so. What you have before you is the annual budget that will be effective October 1 for the Longview Economic Development Corporation. Stated earlier, they receive a quarter cent sales tax of approximately $5 million annually. This budget will fund their activities, such as generating leads for businesses and trying to attract and expand businesses, primarily industrial businesses. Additionally, there's funding of approximately $600,000 for B projects. We use these funds for public safety enhancements and for parks enhancements, as approved by the voters. Additionally, they've budgeted funding to provide the, to support the extension of George Ritchie, and about $25,000 for revitalization activities. So, that, if you have any questions, I'll attempt to answer them, otherwise, I'll be happy to ask for approval.
Counsel, are there any questions?
Well, initially, the reason I made that previous statement earlier, because I wanted Mr. Allen and Mr. Manley to be here also, to give us some feedback on their thoughts on this process of the LECO budget. So, they're not here, so I guess we can make a decision.
Well, a quarter cent sales tax, you want to explain that, or you want me to? That is automatically...
Right. They receive that under the election that was held several years. There was a 4A and a 4B election for certain 4B uses. The, this is their annual budget, their board recommends. It is effective October 1, so that's why we recommend approval due to the timing. If it wasn't approved tonight, then LECO would be operating without a budget, so.
We do get, under 4B, we get $600,000 for the city out of 4B to do projects allowed under 4B. Then they have money, they put away for paying off their debt, and they have money for capital expenditure to bring others in. They have a fund for that, so that's kind of how they break down, plus their operating costs, things like that.
Counsel, any other comments, discussion? If not, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Items of community interests. Mr. Sims?
As you notice, Richard Manley and Sidney Allen are missing tonight, and in a minute, I'd like for us to excuse them, but they've gone to be with Mayor Dean in South Louisiana. Jay is very close to his family, and my heart goes out to him and his family, as well as the rest of the council. I would wish the citizens would keep Jay and Polke and their children, and the rest of the family in their prayers, and we hope he'll be back, although our esteemed Mayor Protem has done a great job tonight, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I got some feedback from a citizen, a citizen that lives in Longview, and they want to thank a lady named Phyllis Morris, who drives a bus for Longview Transit for her service at Emeris Assisted Living Center. The second item is tire recycling begins on October 6, and number three, the sidewalk project is approximately 75% complete at MLK Boulevard. That's all I got, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Prost?
As Mr. Sims said, Richard Manley and Sidney Allen are down there, they flew down there to the funeral, which is tonight, and it's 6:00, so I move that we excuse those three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Indeed, we are all saddened, and we share in Mayor Dean's loss and miss him this evening. So, our prayers as an entire community go out to the Dean family this evening. As Mr. Smith touched on, citywide cleanup is coming up Saturday, October 6, at 8:00 a.m. We need volunteers to sign up. Please call 237-1390. The first three groups of 10 volunteers gets a special prize, so don't let me beat you there to sign up. Neighborhoods across Longview will participate in the annual Texans Against Crime event on October 9. Please call Partners in Prevention at 237-2729 to host a block party for your neighborhood. And we are all going to visit various block parties in our respective neighborhoods, so that's a really good time for our community to come together. And the annual multicultural festival will be held Saturday, October 27, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Longview Exhibit Building. Again, call Partners in Prevention at 237-1019 for more information. If there is nothing else, thank you all for coming out. Council meeting is adjourned.